So, we will call this meeting to order on this fine April 15th. Not my favorite day in the world, but that's okay. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and today we have the San Mateo Parents Nursery School leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on down. Excellent. So, Teacher Mia, in the interest of full disclosure, Teacher Mia was a daughter --
Mayor Papin.
-- was a teacher of our daughter Alexa. So nice to see you here under these circumstances.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so excited to see you. Well, hello, Mayor Papin and council members. We are the San Mateo Parents Nursery School, and we are a private, nonprofit, co-op nursery school in San Mateo, and we're so proud to celebrate our 70th year this year in San Mateo. And I can't think of a better place for someone who lives, born and raised in San Mateo, to be able to serve our families. We have a diverse group of people. We have a robust scholarship program, and, you know, we're the type of place where you walk into Trader Joe's or Costco and guaranteed there's an alumni or a teacher or someone there. So, we're very proud, and we thank you so much for this opportunity.
70 years.
Seventy years.
And you're having a celebration, I think, at some point.
Yes. So, if anyone is into birthday cake and paint-your-own-face booth, and you're not doing anything, May 4th, please come by 1732 Monte Diablo in North Shoreview, San Mateo, and we welcome you to celebrate with us. 70 years.
So, two more questions.
Yes.
What is the average size of the classes that are at your preschool?
Each session, there's 38 children.
Okay.
Two teachers, and anywhere from six to eight lovely volunteers, adults, who come and help us make the day work each session.
Excellent. And is that Gus next to you?
Yes.
I remember when you were pregnant.
Hello.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, with that, how about we call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Bonilla.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Friscat.
Here.
Mayor Papin.
Here. So, we have one ceremonial matter, and I'd like to call for the Executive Director of the San Mateo County, Christine Cole-Zogg, and Board Member Kirsten Keith. I don't see Kirsten, but welcome.
Hello. Thank you. And good evening, Mayor Papin and council members. And yes, unfortunately, just myself here tonight because unfortunately Kirsten Keith, our board member, had a last-minute change of schedule, so I'll do my best. So, first of all, I mean, thank you for the opportunity to present, and as you mentioned, so my name is Christine Cole-Zogg, and I'm the Executive Director for Sustainable San Mateo County, or SSMC for short. So, we are a local nonprofit, and our mission really is to accelerate sustainability adoption throughout the county, and we look at it through a holistic, systems-wide lens. Our key stakeholders include the local government, the business community, other like-minded nonprofits and academia, and as well as members of the general public. And as you know, the issues around sustainability are complex and will require partnerships from all these key stakeholders to move us forward. So, in terms of our core program, those include the Data-Driven Research-Based Indicators Report. We have an annual awards program to recognize our local heroes, and then we also are very excited about our newest initiative, the Sustainability Ideas Bank, to help propel solutions in the future. So, even though we are like pretty nimble and small, we have proven to have a big influence throughout our existence. We are over 25 years old, and we really rely upon our core volunteers, some of us that have been with us since the beginning, so we really hope to be able to continue to include the community moving forward. And just a fun fact, I saw it right now, and with our current board members, we have quite a few past mayors on board, so I thought that was kind of interesting. In the next few slides, I just wanted to give you a glimpse of the type of work that we do in the community. So, I mean, basically, we organize and participate in sustainability events and also local campaigns. Right now, for example, we just joined forces with Menlo Spark on its campaign for fossil-free new buildings, and then, of course, also alliances and partnerships. And really, again, I mean, the goal is to bring the people to the table, to discuss the issues, and then really to gather, exchange information, and move forward with solutions. So, that's another picture of our involvement here. And moving on was the Indicators Report Program, so hopefully you all got like the Yellow brochure, that's our latest report. And as I mentioned before, so it's data-driven, it's research-based, and basically the report is really to provide the city benchmarking and also inform city policy development and implementation by basically tracking over 40 key performance indicators around sustainability. I mentioned our annual awards program again, so that's really to recognize the achievement from our local heroes here in San Mateo County. We recognize individuals and organizations, and those are, the winners are chosen by a panel of judges. We all note that we also give a Green Building Award, and that's done in conjunction with the American Institutes of Architects. So, here are a few images of some of our past awards events. And as you can see, we just celebrated our 20th anniversary, not even two weeks ago, so that was quite exciting as well. Onto the Sustainability Ideas Bank. So, as I mentioned, that's our newest initiative, and really, it will be about compiling sustainability solutions that have been implemented in other places and that are proven to work. And by that, we really hope to make, to accelerate sustainability and to really enable especially cities and businesses to implement sustainability measures and policies at scale. So, we are really excited to share that we have secured funding for the pilot phase, so that's launching. And of course, to do all of this, we rely on the support of our local cities, because I do want to point out that we are not affiliated in any way, nor do we get any funding from the county's Office of Sustainability. And we would like to thank the city of Menlo, oh, sorry, of San Mateo for its important and ongoing support. Couldn't do it without you. And would like to here respectfully ask that you consider an additional support to help us cover the cost of the Sustainability Ideas Bank. So, to conclude, we love to hear about our stakeholders. You do have my contact information. We would love for you to stay in touch, and if there is anything we can help you with, we will be more than happy to do so. So, thanks again for the opportunity to present, SSMC, and for your support.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm not able to pull up the agenda, so let's go to the consent calendar. I think we might have a couple items to pull. The last one, and I think there's one other, so.
Okay. So, for the consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number two, the Measure S Oversight Committee 2019-20 Budget Recommendations. Item number three, Classification Updates for Public Works. Item number four, California Public Employees Retirement System Additional Payment. Item number five, One Transit Center Way Lease Agreement. Item number six, San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency Agency Endorsement. Item number seven, Transfer of Property Rights from County of San Mateo to City of San Mateo North Shoreview Flood Improvements Resolution and Agreement. Item number eight, Engineering On-Call Private Development Services and Amendment. Item number nine, Annual Sewer Basin Rehabilitation On-Call Agreements Amendments. Item number 10, Compressed Natural Gas Truck Body Contract Change Order. Item number 11, Compressed Natural Gas Vehicle Maintenance Facility Agreement Amendment. Item number 12, Public Works Capital Project Appropriation Amendments. Item number 13, Traffic Signal Master Plan Agreement. Item number 14, College of San Mateo Football Games Police Detail Agreement. And item number 15, Letter of Opposition to Senate Bill 50. I do have people who want to speak to item number 15, so we can pull that one, and there's more?
Well, I thought we'd pull item six.
Mm-hmm.
That's right. Just for good old times, is there somebody here that could speak to that item? Why don't you come down now, and sir, maybe you can enlighten us a little bit?
Do you want to take action on the other ones?
Oh, yes. Do we have a motion to carry everything else on consent?
Motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll pass everything on consent calendar but for item six and item, what, 13, or what is it, 15?
15.
15. Good evening, sir. Would you state your name for the record?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Larry Patterson. I'm here on Jim Porter's behalf.
Okay. We just wanted to say hello to you. And thank you for all the hard work you've been doing on sea level rise and our new commission that we're starting.
Appreciate that. I think so the council knows, it's also been a matter of the Water Committee from CAG, which your mayor currently is a member and has been very helpful in terms of moving this forward.
Oh, enough about me. What about you? Okay. With that, do we have any questions for Mr. Patterson?
Before he leaves?
He's in an awful big hurry to get out of here. Maybe you guys can pick him something. How does sea level rise occur? Maybe you can start there.
Well, let me begin with the Ice Age.
All right. That's it. Now the ship's a-dog.
Thank you very much. It's been fun being back.
Good. All right. Do we have any comments? Anybody want to make a motion?
A motion to approve.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we'll move to the last item, and it is, for some reason, I'm not getting the agenda here, so that's why I'm struggling a little bit.
You're --
You're doing great.
I couldn't get these. I had to go in through the internet to get it, but it's not connecting to the internet either. Thank you so much. Okay. So, we will take item number 15, and that is authorizing the mayor, there would be me to send a letter from the City Council opposing Senate Bill 50, carried by Scott Wiener, which is a bill that tries to mandate heights and densities around transit corridors and what they call jobs-rich areas. So, I'm just giving a general kind of understanding of it. I know staff has, they could give us a little more on it should we need to. I know Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Friscat wanted to say a few words. I'm assuming Member Bonilla does as well. What about you folks? Eric, Councilmember Rodriguez, and Gothols. What the heck, you might as well join the party.
Sure.
Okay. All right. So, why don't you take it away?
Okay. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. As far as SB 50, I think it's really imperative that our residents be alert and well-informed regarding the broad-reaching potential impacts that SB 50 will have on San Mateo. So, SB 50 will undoubtedly be the most controversial topic of 2019 because it essentially allows the state of California to override our local planning processes and eliminate our local authority over zoning, parking requirements, and height restrictions. It does not provide a mechanism, as far as I can tell, to exempt cities that have been doing their fair share with housing. For a city like San Mateo, this legislation is punitive because it does not take into account the fact that San Mateo has been at the forefront of progressive policies and TOD residential development for many years now, as evidenced by our rail corridor plan, which we passed in 2005, and the many transit-oriented housing projects already, that have already been built, those that are in progress, and those that are even in our pipeline. Under SB 50, properties within a half a mile of a transit center or a quarter of a mile of established transportation routes can be developed for multi-housing without regard to our established zoning or height limits, and it significantly decreases requirements for parking. I think these zoning changes can create significant negative impacts on neighborhoods already suffering from inadequate parking supplies, such as North Central, and it can dramatically change the character of our single-family neighborhoods. While we all recognize the severe jobs, housing imbalance, and our obligation to do our fair share to build housing, SB 50 is an extreme overreach and a one-size-fits-all, thoughtless approach. I've often said that regional problems require regional solutions, and I'm proud of San Mateo's active engagement on many regional bodies addressing transportation, housing, air and water quality, climate change, public safety, and a host of other issues. Successful regional approaches, however, require the full participation of impacted cities, and in the case of SB 50, we simply have a state mandate that will dramatically change our city without our input. I find this particularly disturbing as our general plan process is unfolding for the specific purpose of having all of our San Mateo residents included in creating a vision for the future San Mateo that they want to see. While well-meaning SB 50 is written, we'll derail that process because we will no longer have the local authority or autonomy to determine our city's future. There is also much that is still left to interpretation. I believe we have an obligation to strongly oppose this legislation on behalf of our constituency and insist on far more careful consideration of these sweeping changes, along with our full participation in creating any policy that would dramatically impact the city of San Mateo. I sincerely appreciate Mayor Papin's lead on this and fully support submitting our written opposition to SB 50 to our state legislators.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Bonilla.
Sure. So, while I agree with a lot of what Maureen just said, I have to state that I would take maybe a slightly more cautious approach. SB 50 is, like she just said, well-meaning, well-intentioned. It seeks to build housing that we desperately need in the whole state, although there are certain variations about, you know, which parts of the state and the Bay Area and so forth that there is, have done with their efforts to build housing, and specifically affordable housing. And we in San Mateo have been, I think, no slackers in terms of building housing, but the fact remains that we have a huge housing imbalance. And don't get me wrong from the start, I'm not purporting that we should either support or oppose, I'm going to cut a different path down the middle. So, let me talk for a second about that. I believe that this is new legislation. It's only passed through one of the initial several committees it needs to pass through. It is recognized already, and it has been amended, but it's recognized that it needs more amending. Okay? So, this is an unfinished product that is going to require more refining before it's ready for anybody to really say support or oppose. And I think this is the kind of situation where, if you're smart, you don't try to cut your chance to participate in the process off early by taking a hard and fast position. Instead, you say, "We see the pluses and the minuses. We would like to see it amended further, and here are the ways we'd like to see it amended." With that standing, we would like to say that at this point, we can't support it. However, if it were amended properly, using the considerations that we outlined in our letter, then perhaps we could support it at some point. So, that's kind of what I'm thinking, and I'd like to see what other opinions council members may have.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Okay. First, I just wanted to acknowledge that I agree with the goals of SB 50, and I also agree that with the intentions and that our region as a whole has a significant housing shortage, and we need to do all as we can as a region to build more housing, especially affordable housing. However, I do not support SB 50, and I wanted to take a couple moments to explain my position on this. You know, I believe as a locally elected council member, our job is to strike a delicate balance between making sure that we act responsibly to ensure that we are building and planning for our fair share of the region's housing, but at the same time, we must do everything we can to protect the quality of life in our neighborhoods and existing residents by building in a manner that makes the most sense, given the unique challenges and constraints of our city. According to our planning department, I mean, I don't, I will spend a couple moments just talking about what was in the letter because I think it's really important. In the last five years, we've built or entitled to build nearly 3,000 housing units, and we have another 1,300 in the pipeline that will most likely be built. That, once those housing units get built, that will be an increase in housing supply in San Mateo of over 11%. That is roughly the housing supply of the size of Atherton's total housing supply in the last five years. But the balance part of this is that we also are experiencing some stark quality-of-life challenges, and it is, and this is where the balance part comes in. The windows of rush hour traffic in our neighborhood streets is expanding. Some of our neighborhoods, especially those neighborhoods that are far away from public transit, are facing severe neighborhood parking shortages, and this is pitting neighbor versus neighbor, as we're seeing with our abandoned vehicles, calls to our police department reaching nearly 5,000 calls per year, and this, there is not an increase in abandoned vehicles. This is just neighbors fighting neighbors because they can't find parking, and nobody wants to leave their parking spot once they find it. And we also saw that with neighbors using trash cans to reserve their parking spots. And I believe that SB 50 is going to take away the tools that responsible cities have to help manage these quality-of-life challenges. And for example, as I think Deputy Mayor Friscat mentioned, in jobs-rich areas, but jobs-rich areas that are transit-poor, parking minimums are going to be lowered, and that's only going to make the situation worse than it is right now. SB 50 treats San Mateo the same way it would treat Huntington Beach, San Jose, Petaluma, and Lodi. And all of these cities are very different. They have their unique challenges, and they have demonstrated different commitments to building housing. I do not think that this one-size-fits-all approach is fair, nor do I think it will work. I also have some concerns for our historic neighborhoods, such as Hayward Park, that where it would only take a couple enterprising developers to acquire one or two adjoining small bungalows, and before you know it, it can completely change the character of that neighborhood. So, that's why I'm against SB 50.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Gothols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that my fellow colleagues have said it quite well, that we agree with the principles of SB 50 and that housing is a critical issue for so many people in the Bay Area with our jobs, housing imbalance. We agree with the principles with which the legislators tried to approach this issue, but they have sort of usurped local city councils' job. Our job is land use. Our job is to make our community what our residents want it to be, and so that's something that SB 50 violates, and we want to make sure that we retain that local control that's critical to communities like ours. I think that Rick is right about one thing, which is that the bloodsport of Washington and the bloodsport of Sacramento is to amend bills constantly and get people to take positions and end up on both sides of it based on amendments that are made. I do think at a minimum, we should talk about SB 50 in its current form so that there's no confusion as we go forward. I don't know that I, that we need to spell out all the amendments that we would want to it, because I think there aren't enough amendments to get many people to vote for it. It could not be a perfect bill. Really, what needs to happen is more city councils have to be responsible and do what San Mateo's doing. I don't think that we have turned down any housing units except for one in the last number of decades. So, San Mateo is trying to address this issue, and I hope that we continue to do that moving forward. I guess I would agree with the one proposal that Rick had, which was that we limit this to SB 50 in its current form. Certainly, we agree on all the principles. I agree with the way that the letter was written. I just don't want to get in the situation where, as SB 50 gets amended, whether people have questions of whether we're against good things that might be added to it or bad things that might be added to it. So, those are my two cents.
Okay. All right. So, I, let me weigh in if I may, but I think I too can appreciate the legislature is trying to do something about the jobs, housing imbalance. But the underlying premise for me cannot be cured by amendment. I think that land use has been under local control for a reason, and that reason doesn't go away with any amendment that I can foresee to the bill. The reason is that each individual locality has different constraints on it, and those constraints might be that you have water on one side of you, such as we do. We've got a lot of open space. We have different topography that you just can't take into account in a one-size-fits-all approach. So, for me, I, and, you know, I've heard the author of the bill say many times, "Well, don't reject it. Tell me how you can amend it." I don't know how you get out of this idea of usurping land use from local control. I mean, I just don't see it, because so much has to be balanced at the local level, whether that's, as I said, physical, topography, open space, the fiscal constraints that might come with it, how do you finance infrastructure that might be needed, how do you take into account what you're going to find as a jobs-rich area, and how does that impede on the quality of life that currently exists, and there's a lot of tension out there. So, for me, I don't see a cure. I think this letter is measured. If there are amendments that come up, we could certainly, I'm willing to take those up, but at this point, I don't see land use being done at the state. I just don't, I don't see it. I've heard the author of the bill say, "Well, you know, the state controls education." That's comparing apples to oranges. So, it's just not there for me. I, did you have something else that you wanted to add? I saw you, if not, my remarks are, you know, they dovetail on. I don't want to do a lot of repetition, and I'm happy to open it up for comment as well. So, did you want to add something?
No, not at this moment, no.
Okay. So, anybody wants to add anything else? Okay. Let's open it up for comment, and then we'll bring it back, and we can have, if anybody wants to have additional comment after public comment, and then we'll take a vote.
I have five speakers. First speaker is Rich Hedges, followed by Nathan Chan.
Good evening, Mayor Papin, council members. I have to tell you, I'm very proud of San Mateo. San Mateo, as you have all said, has been a leader in building housing, and I think it's actually been closer to 4,000 units, and we count the Bay Meadows one in that, that was built out in the late '90s. So, we have done a great job. But I'm here to say that I think this letter that you're sending is well-drafted, but I think you need a change. The Change Research Poll was just reported in San Francisco Chronicle that 61% of Californians are in favor of this. 41% of the Republicans polled were in favor of it. So, Senate Bill 50 is not looked on by the population as horribly as it is by the leaders in the cities. And what I said at MTC when this started was, "It's much harder to give up authority than just to get it." So, watch out, because people aren't going to like this. So, I disagree with the letter mildly in two areas. I think that if I were writing the letter, and on my experience with legislation is that after the word "oppose," I would simply put "unless amended." that after the word "oppose," I would simply put "unless amended," because that does give you some leverage. And actually, Weiner's going to be in San Mateo County Thursday night. You could go talk to him at the Democratic Central Committee. So I just got an email from him saying he was going to be there.
Come here, I'll make time.
So, and the one thing I don't disagree with in the letter is the issue of, of how much it's going to change San Mateo, because we already have height limits in some areas that are higher than SB 50. And quite frankly, I can't believe that somebody's going to buy two or three lots in San Mateo Park and build a four-story housing development. It just won't pencil out. The taxi development over on 28th Street, they can't get funding to build it because there's so much below-market-rate housing in it. So that should be an indication to everybody that, that we're not going to rip up our R1 neighborhoods, nor would I be in favor of that and would fight it. So let's demand that Senate Bill 50 recognizes that we are different from everybody else, and let's not let the cities who have developed with one employer 25,000 to 35,000 employees and build very little housing, let's don't let them off the hook. They're the ones that are creating all of our traffic. And if you don't believe me, come up 280 about 4:30 in the evening and see where it starts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Nathan Chan, followed by Thomas Heiser, then Jordan Grimes, and then Sarah Fields.
Good evening, council members. I'm going to take a slightly different approach to talking about SB 50 and talk about the climate aspects of this important legislation. I've been concerned about climate change for a long time, and I got to tell you, it's really hard to be someone who's concerned about climate change and look at the news these days. There's the record-breaking typhoon in East Africa, there's the flooding that happened in the Midwest. We have, and all the while, we have a, we have a president at the federal level who denies that this is even an issue. It's really scary seeing what's happening in the world today and looking at what the projections are for the future. I'm so scared and uncertain, like, I'm at the age where I should be thinking about having kids within the next couple of years, and I don't really know if I want to have them. I don't really know if the projections that are portending the types of dislocation, human dislocation that might happen as a result of these changes, is that the type of world that we should be bringing children in? That's my own personal opinion, by the way. Everyone is entitled to their own evaluation of this, but it is something that weighs very heavily on me. The last attempt to do climate legislation at the federal level was in 2009. So in the last 10 years, nothing has been done to address climate change at the federal level. And the latest IPCC report says that we have just 12 years to really bend the curve on emissions. I really encourage the city council members and any policy makers at every level to think about the opportunities to address this issue as the last best attempt to address this issue. You may quibble with the details of SB 50 about the ways that it might undermine your control over land use, but I think that this is our last best attempt to reorient our development patterns in California, to reorient our focus on car culture, and to reorient our, and reorient our upward trajectory on vehicle emissions. The California Air Resources Board has said that California is making progress on reducing emissions in electricity generation, but not on transportation. That is not going anywhere. We are not going to bend that path, bend that curve unless we change our development patterns. I would strongly urge you not to oppose this bill because, as you've all said, a lot of you agree with the principles. This is a serious issue. We need to solve it, and I believe this is our last best attempt to solve it. Thank you. Don't let it slip away.
Thank you, Mr. Chan.
Next speaker is Thomas Heiser, followed by Jordan Grimes, and then Sarah Fields.
Good evening, council. I'm actually just going to, I'm going to rearrange what I was going to say, because it dovetails nicely with what Nathan said. To just sort of drive home the point about the California Resources Board, the single largest generator of greenhouse gas emissions in the state of California is vehicle transportation at 40%. It's larger than any other single category. The most recent report that I've read from California Resources Board cites basically lengthening commutes as the reason for this. And we know, you know, if anybody wants to come sit and, you know, over by the lagoon, over by 92, and watch the traffic backed up eastbound in the evening, as everyone who works on the peninsula but can't afford to live here, because there is nowhere to live here relative to the job growth over the last however many years, that's where those emissions are coming from. You know, we can talk about electrification of vehicles, but if we're also going to electrify a lot of, away a lot of the natural gas use that we use to heat our homes, you know, run our cookstoves, all of these things, you know, there's going to be some decisions that have to be made about where are these solar panels going in? And at some point in the last few months, you know, one of the counties down in Southern California started to push back against this, because they don't want us dumping our solar panels in their backyards. So, you know, we have to try to take as much of this responsibility for what we're doing locally. That said, I'm strongly in favor of SB 50, so, you know, I hope that you won't oppose the bill. I think that's probably a lost cause on my part. But that said, I do want to say that I found a few aspects of the draft of the letter that I saw online earlier today. I don't know if it's changed. It sounded like one of the readings that I heard earlier was a little different, perhaps. I'm a little confused under Point 3 about the, there's a, the letter states that land has varying physical and topographical constraints, such as inclines and water. SB 50 mandates heights and densities irrespective of the physical characteristics of the land. I don't really know how to read that, other than suggesting, like, and I, this isn't in the bill, so I don't know where this is coming from. SB 50 isn't going to require that we're, you know, filling in the bay half a mile from a train station. So I don't really understand how that's relevant to the discussion of SB 50. Also, as far as mandating heights and densities, it's really more about allowing property owners to choose to build heights and densities. It's not that the state's going to come in and build five-story buildings near train stations. It's allowing individual property owners the choice to build as they want. And also, under the fiscal impacts, and I, now, I'm not speaking from a position of knowledge of this, but it does raise an interesting point of, if one of the cornerstones of the opposition of SB 50 is that development, you know, we're already, as I believe the letter states, there are already challenges with meeting pension obligations in San Mateo, I'd be interested to see basically where, you know, we can raise revenue from land. Where, what are the well-performing assets in this town? What properties raise a lot of property tax? And will changing a one-story house into a three-story apartment building bring in more revenue or less revenue? I'd like to see that analysis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jordan Grimes, followed by Sarah Fields.
Good evening, council. Jordan Grimes, 19th Avenue Park resident, also representing Peninsula for Everyone, formerly Peninsula Yimby. So there's so much to talk about here, but I'd like to start, I think, just by saying, I really believe, I've been very proud of how our council has acted the last few years. I think there are many cities along the peninsula that have not acted the way ours has, and I think that really gets to the crux of why I support SB 50. The rest of the peninsula is not doing their share. I don't think we have in the past either, and I'd like to share what I hope will be enlightening for some of you, some of my favorite San Mateo Times articles about the housing crisis, starting in 1974, with the article, "Cheap Housing Shortage Here: 9,000 Units Needed." 1975, "County Housing Costs Squeezing Families." 1976, "Housing Crunch Hurts Everyone." 1979, "Housing Shortage Reaching Crisis." 1982, "Housing Needs Report By Bay Government Challenges Cities." 1982, "Lack of Housing A Major Problem." 1982, 1982 was a big year for housing, apparently. Survey Views Housing Crisis. And one more, 1982, "Report Says Lack of Housing Hurts City Economic Growth." We jump now to 1984, and this is my personal favorite, "My Kids Can't Afford to Live Here." 1985, "New Strategy to Fight Housing Crunch." 1985, 1985's biggest issue? What else? Housing. 1985, "Rents Triple in San Mateo." 1986, "Panel Says Housing Is Biggest Problem." 1989, "County Housing Most Expensive in California: Only 6% Can Afford Median-Priced Home." Oh, this is out of order. 1987, "Bay Panel Criticizes San Mateo Jobs-Home Ratio." 1990, "Cities Get Housing Warning." 1994, "Affordable Housing on a Slide: NIMBYism a Factor." And finally, 1999, "Bay Area Housing Supply to Lag Behind Job Growth." The biggest issue to me going forward is looking back and assessing where we went wrong, and to me, it's pretty clear. We haven't built enough housing to keep up with job growth. And frankly, it's very well documented, even in the city of San Mateo, which in 1990, if you look at our 1990 housing element, if you're a crazy person like me, city staff estimated that San Mateo's job and population, with San Mateo's job and population growth, the city would need to have a total of 43,220 housing units by 2005. Today, we have 41,250. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. And we have one more.
Sarah Fields, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Sarah Fields. I live here in San Mateo, and I'm speaking to you this evening as the president of the Peninsula Young Democrats. Earlier this year, the Peninsula Young Democrats unanimously and enthusiastically voted to endorse SB 50 for two central reasons. First, to reduce the current financial instability of renters and curbing California's climate change emissions. We were extremely happy to endorse this bill, and frankly, to join an esteemed group of other endorsers, including the California League of Conservation Voters, the Natural Resources Defense Council, labor organizations, including the California Labor Federation and the State Building and Construction Trades Council, as well as affordable housing organizations, including Habitat for Humanity and the Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California. We are a club that is very concerned about quality of life issues. This is an area that is extremely attractive for young people to come. We represent Democrats on the peninsula, age 18 to 35, and we feel that this bill will allow for more housing and more availability for people to come here, people to live more comfortably, and we're deeply concerned about being able to stay here. This is obviously a great place to live, but it's a bit challenging. The primary focus around TOD, which I know there's a history in San Mateo, a relatively recent history of San Mateo, of building transit-oriented development. This will continue through SB 50, which I know is important to the council. Lastly, I just want to say, the environmental impact here is really significant, and we shouldn't take it for granted. The focus here on building transit-oriented development and really pushing people towards transportation and away from parking requirements, I think, is really key, and I do think it will get people out of their cars. I know parking is a central issue, but I can tell you, I live very near the Hayward Park Station, and I commute by Caltrain, and I believe more of my neighbors, as they move in, will do the same. So, young people are for SB 50. I feel confident in telling you that, and I hope you take my advice into your letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Anyone else? Okay. So we'll bring it back to the council. Additional comments? I have some, but I'm willing to go later.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. So, you know, when I spoke earlier, I did forget to mention, actually, an important thing, which is that we need to remember that SB 50 is also an attempt to cut greenhouse gas emissions in a very large way, because that's another end of the full circle of what we're looking at with housing and transportation. If we do all of this right, then we are able to cut greenhouse gas emissions, which goes straight to the point of, you know, sea level rise. We already have fire, floods, droughts, you name it. We need to work to get these things under control. If we can get people to live closer to where they work, then the more of that that's done, get them out of their cars, we eliminate the congestion, not only on the freeway and the bridge, but also our neighborhood streets, we'll all be that much better off. But that said, I agree that this needs to be done in an organized manner that the people of San Mateo can live with. So that said, I go back to what I think, which is that the legislature has a raft of these kind of bills going through right now. And I think it's a good time to, rather than oppose right off the top, say, "How can we work with you?" My mention still would be, you know, that we would oppose unless amended, and state all the reasons why we think it needs to be amended. We don't have to state them in long form. We can just state them in general, because this is something that will continue to be worked on. It's not finished. It's not ready for an oppose or support, either way. It's ready, I think, to say, "We're in, let's participate, let's try to get the right thing done." And in the end, if it's something we can't support, then we don't support it, I guess, as a council. Okay? That's it. Right now, I have a problem just coming out saying that, that I oppose it. So, thank you very much.
Okay.
Well, and you know, I, I guess one of the concerns I have, and I understand what you're saying, Rick, but the state really hasn't asked us to participate, as far as I can tell. You know, they're working on it, so to say, "We oppose it unless amended," well, how are we going to know what the amendments are if they're not engaging the cities in those conversations? That would be my concern. I mean, if they want to come and say, you know, "We've given lots of the reasons here why we have a concern with this." If the state comes and says, "We want to hear from you, here's what we're looking at, what do you think? How does that, how does that fit? Do we need to do an exemption for cities that are doing their share?" But I'm not seeing that happen. And so that's why I have a concern with saying, "We oppose it unless amended," because who knows what that amendment's going to be.
So I have something to add to that, because I just saw Scott Weiner last week, and I spoke to him. Told him what I thought he should work on. Also, he built, he'll be here Thursday night, we heard that. He's going to be available to speak with people. And anytime the legislature takes any kind of action, it's posted on their website. You can look at it and track it. Anybody can do that.
Okay. I think I would have preferred they had come to us before me even moving forward with something that's this, has this kind of impact, so.
Okay.
Just real quickly, my issue with waiting for the amendments is because I agree with Mayor Pappin that it's the core of what it's about, taking away decisions of Samiteans who are in the middle right now of a big general plan discussion. We are talking about height limits, we are talking about density, we're talking about how maybe a one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work for everything in San Mateo, and maybe different parcels deserve different height limits. And to just take that away right now and say, "Councils do not have a say in that discussion," that's going to completely alter the community discussion, just like enacting Measure P would be before we finish the general plan process. So I, it's really hard for me to say, "Let's wait," when at the core of it, I think it's very bad for San Mateo. It might be a better thing for California, because I agree that there's probably more cities that are not doing their fair share than there are. But for a city like San Mateo, who is, who I think is bending over backwards recently, I mean, yes, back in the 80s and 90s, maybe not, but in the last six, seven years, we've really ramped it up. I don't think it's fair for the city, for San Mateo residents, and they are who voted us in here.
Anything to add?
Just briefly, I want to agree with what Councilman Rodriguez just said, that these outside forces were trying to influence the landscape of San Mateo makes it very difficult for us to do our jobs in representing San Mateo residents. We have a huge jobs housing imbalance. It's a crisis. I don't think the state legislature would be writing bills like this if it wasn't a crisis facing the entire state, a crisis that affects transportation, housing, quality of life on a massive scale. They didn't wade into this lightly, so I appreciate that they're trying to take it as serious as it is. We're also trying to take a principled view that we are doing the right thing, and other cities should do the right thing, and these are decisions that should be made at the city level. With all of that having been said, I would, I would ask, I would ask that we amend the letter just insofar as we say that, in its current iteration, we oppose it with what it says right now, not knowing how it will be amended, not knowing whether we will agree or disagree with those amendments. If we're going to state an opinion, it is time-sensitive to what's in it right now in its current form. Those words would be sufficient.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that, something like that, or what I suggest, would save us and actually give us a place at that table. Simply saying we oppose it, and I think we're out of it. Nobody's going to want to come and ask us about it.
Anything to add? Okay. I am not in favor of doing that. I think that it is not data-driven. I think that housing in this community has been taken quite seriously for many, many years. Taking this stance is not an anti-housing stance, it is not a stance that we don't want to see housing in this community near jobs. The only reason why, at least in my opinion that I'm taking this stance, is that I want to see it done right for the residents of this community, and I think that this body, I'm not afraid to give away authority, but I think this body is in the best position to assess and to balance out the competing interests. It has done so for many years. In actuality, when you look at, I appreciate the history that was given to us, uh, by Mr. Grimes, but in actuality, we may have had a housing shortage, but it's never been to this degree where we, where it hasn't kept up with jobs. It's really been the last 10 years where we've had an incredible jobs-housing imbalance. We did a relatively good job up until that point. Now, when I look at this community, and I see what this community has done, I don't see that bill as being data-driven. I don't see the bill as saying, these communities, given that they have water on one side, you, that was confusing to you, don't let it be confusing to you. When you have physical restraints, that means that the density has to happen in an area that may already be dense. So, I think that cities and localities are in the best position to weigh those competing constraints, and this bill cannot be cured, from my perspective, and I don't think that this is an anti-housing position. I think this is a housing position that can happen in the, within the constraints for a particular community, and that's what we're trying to achieve by opposing the bill. So, I, I appreciate, usually, I, I'm one to say, let's keep the dialogue going, but the underlying premise of this bill, I, I, I don't see how, how you get that back. So, I'm.
Yeah, I, I would agree, because I don't see how they amend it to give back the local control. As long as it continues to be taking local control away from the communities, that's a problem.
So, anyway, that's where I'm coming from. Uh, if, we don't have anything further to add? We have a motion, and we'll go from there.
I'll make a motion that we approve the letter, um, I don't have the agenda in front of me. SB 50, Letter of Opposition, and approve for the mayor to sign, uh, sign that.
And I second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. That'll pass three to one to zero, uh, to one, excuse me.
Let me ask, could we have the letter state the outcome of the vote?
I think the motion's already passed. I'm not willing to do that, but if other people want to take that up, they can certainly do that.
I don't see any other support, so there we go. Thanks.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
I don't see any other support, so I guess that's it. We're done.
Okay. All right, so we will move on to, uh, item 16, Wastewater Treatment Plant Modifications Addendum. Oh, sorry. Let's go to public comment. Forgive me.
I have no speaker slips.
No speaker slips, okay. Uh, then we will go to the item 16, Wastewater Treatment Plant Modifications.
Good evening, Mayor Pappin and members of the council. Is that too close? Okay, thank you. My name is Cora Kogian, I'm the Community Development Director, and along with Brad Underwood, we will be doing the presentation this evening on the wastewater treatment plant modifications. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to review the modifications to the wastewater treatment plant. Brad and I will tag-team the presentation. I will go over the purpose first. Brad will give us an update on the reasons why this modification is necessary, then I will take over and walk briefly through the background on how we got here, show you the design modifications and renderings that have been prepared, and then conclude with the action being requested of the council this evening. The purpose of... Oh.
What's?
Sorry about that. We only missed one slide, I think we're good. The purpose of tonight's meeting, as I mentioned, is to consider the design modifications made to the wastewater treatment plant, which was approved by council in July of 2018. The modifications are to one of the planning entitlements, it is the site plan and architectural review, which will also include a finding for environmental adequacy. And then the second entitlement being requested tonight is an introduction to an ordinance to allow off-site construction staging.
Mayor and city council members, I'm Brad Underwood, Public Works Director, and, uh, this item may be familiar to you, so I wanted to kind of, uh, bring this forward to you about why, uh, the changes were occurring. Uh, you did approve this project back this last July. Um, as the, we received the cost estimate and the 60% design this past fall, uh, the estimates kept climbing up higher and higher, so, uh, decided to take a pause at the 60% design and do another, uh, value engineering effort to see what we could do about the cost. So, we redesigned this, we anticipate a $25 million in savings from this redesign, uh, and GMP 1, we're seeing already a seven-plus-million-dollar difference, as we have those, uh, costs, uh, already, uh, developed, um, so, and that's the smallest package. So, the 25 million could be even, uh, higher than that. Uh, we, the design is, uh, still meeting the regulatory requirements. We actually found out additional information from, uh, the Bay Area Water Conservation Authority about nutrient levels within the bay that would be needed, and, uh, rather than having, uh, target levels, which it would have anticipated before, uh, they're just asking that we remove, uh, 30% of the total nitrogen that we're in, in, uh, going into the bay now through the San Mateo plant, and that by 2024, if we complete that, we'll be an early actor, which will then allow us, uh, the, uh, not to be su- subject to future regulations in that area for some time. Uh, we've also optimized the treatment plant process for more efficient wet weather, uh, using a smaller footprint, um, and it's a little less complex for the staff to, uh, to utilize and implement. This also maintains our current pro- program objectives that we, we had all along, which are dealing with aging infrastructure, meeting the regulation, the, the regulations, uh, building a wet weather, uh, capacity assurance, uh, through that multi-pronged approach, if you recall, the collection system and the wastewater treatment plant, and meeting as the city's sustainability goals. So, the benefits of the modification are, um, we're still meeting the regional water quality control board requirements and deadlines. Again, uh, our permit requires that we don't, don't blend, so this, this will still allow us to do that through the, at the plant with these improvements. Um, and then, uh, we'll meet WIFI's schedule as well. Three of you I know went with myself to, uh, Washington DC to talk to our legislatures about WIFI application, which we've been accepted for. This results, of course, into a hundred, $100 million, uh, interest savings to our ratepayers, so very significant, so this will keep us on schedule for that application. Mitigate, if, if we keep, uh, on process and we can, uh, continue the, the project going forward, we'll continue, uh, to not have the, a million dollar, about, basically about a million dollar a month in escalation. Uh, we plan to be before you on May 6th with the Ward of GMP 1.
So, this slide. Sorry about that. So, everybody knows where the wastewater treatment plant is located, but just to make sure, um, everybody in the room is also oriented, it's located on the eastern border of San Mateo, south of the San Francisco Bay and J. Hart Clinton Drive, outlined in orange here. It's the location of our existing wastewater treatment plant. So, as previously mentioned, the council did approve the wastewater treatment plant in July of 2018. Earlier this year in February, the Public Works Department, along with the Clean Water Program, provided an update and did notify council of the project modifications needed, as Brad just explained. This slide just shows the side-by-side comparison, um, on the project that was approved on the left in July, and then the proposed project modifications on the right. I will go in more detail on the next slide. So, the design modifications, it can be really summarized in four, um, points. The first is the replacement of the circular clarifiers with the rectangular clarifiers. Here you'll see the circular clarifiers, and now there are rectangular clarifiers. This also includes a reduction in the total structure size by about 31,000 square feet. The re, the administration building was previously located adjacent to the wastewater treatment, um, plant. Now it is located, um, directly adjacent to it. Third, the maintenance warehouse was increased in size by about 2,800 square feet and has a change in exterior materials, which I'll go in more detail, I'll show you elevations and, and upcoming slides. And then fourth, there have been some landscape modifications made to the overall site due to the reduction in size of the overall plant. So, here is a view of the, um, new modified project. You'll see here that the administration building was previously located on the site, but just a little further away from the treatment plant is now located adjacent and attached to the treatment plant. The basic materials, form and structure of the administration building stayed the same, however, there were just some slight modifications to the entry plaza, given its new location. And due to the reduction, um, in the size of the treatment plant, additional landscaping was added along the per- perimeter of the plant, as well as throughout the entire site. Landscape modifications were made and additional landscaping was included. The landscape materials, for the most part, stayed the same, all drought-tolerant native landscaping, however, the form changed, creating more of a pedestrian, um, feel throughout the whole site. The wall here, where the previous circular clarifiers were proposed, is now a curved, um, excuse me, there, there was a curved wall, now it's a straight wall, however, the estuary metal panel has now been, um, dropped down. It used to be up here 19 feet higher than it is now to provide a screen for the rectangular Now I'm going to walk you through a pedestrian, um, scale view of the site. That previous image was the bird's-eye view, which very few people will see. Um, this view here is the, a view from the northwest as you enter into the site. Up on the top, you'll see the original approval, and on the bottom is the new proposed modifications. Again, you can see the, the metal, um, estuary wall here, the walking path with the pedestrian educational components remain the same. This tree here will be also on the modified project, but we removed it so that you can get a view of the, um, proposed administration building, which has been relocated and is now adjacent to the site. This is a view from the pedestrian path, so the view we saw earlier was from this side, and now we're walking towards, um, the other side of the wastewater treatment plant. Again, the educational components that were previously approved remain the same. The, the largest change that you'll notice here is the change from the circular clarifiers now to the rectangular, uh, clarifiers and the straight wall, and the mesh estuary screen This is yet another, um, view. Because of the reduction in size, you'll get a better, um, view of the administration building. Um, this is at the corner, at the northeast corner of the site. The second request, um, this evening in terms of an action, is, um, a uncodified ordinance, and the ordinance is requested because we need to stage the construction somewhere. And because the site is going to be, um, occupied by the existing wastewater treatment plant, as whereas the future wastewater treatment plant, there is nowhere on-site to do construction staging. The city has identified three city-owned parcels where the construction staging could take place. The areas were reviewed by the Car- Parks and Recreation Commission and approved, um, for staging, and the environmental effects of staging off-site were evaluated in the first addendum already approved for the project. However, the zoning code, um, in San Mateo prohibits these two, these three areas and the zoning in those areas, um, to have construction off-site staging. So, staff is requesting that the council introduce an ordinance tonight, um, allowing, prohibit, allowing that the off-site construction staging be, um, on those three sites. Lastly, there was a sequoian analysis done on the modifications. An addendum has been prepared, finding that because only minor changes occurred to the project, and there was no new information presented, and no new environmental impacts from the modified project, um, primarily due to the reduction in size, and no new mitigation measures, um, that the environmental document previously approved adequately analyzes the environmental effects of the project. So, no new additional sequoian analysis was, would be necessary. So, tonight, staff is requesting that the council take two actions. The first is to adopt a resolution approving the design modifications to the site plan and architectural review, finding that the addendum adequately analyzes the environmental effects of the modifications. And second, introducing the ordinance exempting the city-owned sites from the provisions of the zoning code in order to allow the off-site construction staging. That concludes our presentation, and Brad and I are available to answer any questions, as well as Azalea Mitch managing the project, and the entire Clean Water Program team, um, design team, consultants are all available for any site-specific questions.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you so much. Uh, I'm going to bring it back for questions. Um, I have just a couple, but I'll let, did you have any?
Nope.
Rick?
Um, I think I have one question to start with. Is the electrical room still below sea level? Because I'm seeing here where it says that the floor level is at basically sea level, and that the levee is expected to protect from all of that, but is the electrical room, as I saw in plans earlier, still below sea level?
Yeah, some of the electrical is below sea level, but it's protected by the concrete wall, the concrete structure. Any electrical that was outside, um, any protection from the, the walls that we have, uh, for the galleries, is up three feet above sea level rise that we expect.
So, all thresholds are three feet above sea level rise, as expected, when?
Um, that's the mid-level scenario, I believe, by the state, and Azalea can probably straighten me out if I get it wrong, uh, for 2,100.
Sure, if I can add to that. Azalea Mitch, City, um, Public Works Deputy Director. The 3.4 was selected based on the 60%, 66% chance, so probability, um, depending on the 2,100 high emission scenario. So, it's the highest range within that probability for year 2,100.
Okay. Thanks for now.
Overall, reduction of the treatment structure by 31,950 square feet, that doesn't impact capacity, right?
That's correct. The capacity of the plant stays the same with 21 MGD, um, for, uh, regular, normal, uh, dry weather flow, and 78 MGD for wet weather flow.
MGD is a million gallons per day, right? Okay, and so, capacity doesn't change, and we save 25 million, and if we don't decide by May 1, is another million dollars in the, in the bucket, right?
Yes, I would say you're correct.
So, that sums it all up, for the most part. Okay. Okay, uh, let's open up to public comment.
I have no speaker slips.
Well, that was fast. Surely we can draw this out, you've got everybody here. I don't, you know, I want to get my money's worth.
Motion to approve this item.
Second. Anybody? Do we have a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All those abstaining?
All abstaining right now.
Okay. That passes four to zero to one. Thank you so much. Just give me a second here. Next up, we have the King Park Improvement Projects, and this is old business. Mr. Council, welcome.
Do we have our public board?
We took it. It's that way.
It's over here.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Paul Council, the Parks and Recreation Department, and I'm serving as the manager of the King Park Improvements Project. This item was first brought to the council, uh, at their March 18th meeting, and, um, at that time, we had, uh, recommended, uh, a ward of contract to Goodland, uh, Landscape Construction and to Field Turf to complete the improvements. And the council had directed to, uh, continue that item, um, because we had not yet, um, been able to make contact with San Jose Unified School District as a, um, a referral. Um, and the reason that that was an important one was because there had been, uh, Goodland had notified us that there was a, an investigation that the State Department of Industrial Relations had. was a investigation that State Department of Industrial Relations had opened about their compliance with apprenticeship requirements of the Labor Code. So the council wanted to have more time to hopefully make that contact with them. Subsequent to that, staff was able to speak with the project manager from the Unified School District. And within that conversation, we spoke about the whole question about the use of apprentices. And the Unified School District's conclusion was that they had complied with the requirements, but they acknowledged that one of the unions had disagreed with that. And so with that and an overall favorable recommendation from the Unified School District, as well as the other references that we had had, we prepared an administrative report for your April 1st meeting to approve the contracts as previously presented. That same day, we received an email from the laborers' local union that transmitted two documents from the state related to Goodland's use of apprentices on a project in Pleasanton. And so because of the timing of that, we felt it was important to have the time to get a response from Goodland, to make sure that we had all the information and documents to be able to make a full assessment of that situation, be able to preside or provide full information to the council. So we pulled the item from the April 1 meeting to allow us to do that. And so we've done that to the degree that we think is necessary and possible. That due diligence that we did included speaking with Goodland, and Goodland followed up with an email to us and supplied a third document that was related to that specific Pleasanton incident. In addition, I spoke with the deputy commissioner at the DIR who had signed the first two documents. So I just want to really briefly assess our understanding of what the requirements are and what the issues were related to the Pleasanton project. So the state labor code requires for public works projects that apprentices be hired on a one regular hour apprentice for five hours of journeyman. And specific, I'm sorry, I'm too tall, I can't. It's too late to do anything about that.
Let's see if we can bend it up. Does it help?
Well, I'll try and speak up. That's not my nature, but I will. So the Northern California Laborers' Joint Apprenticeship Committee had requested from the state an exception to that one to five hour requirement of labor code. And the committee had based that upon their determination that it's not a practical application for laborers and that doesn't provide adequate supervision for them. And so the exception was granted by the state based upon that determination. And it allows for, for laborers, that the first four laborers on a project can be journeymen. There's a encouragement that apprentices are brought on, there's not a requirement for that. But that the fifth laborer would need to be an apprentice. And so the next part of the information is really around then those circumstances related to Pleasanton. So Goodland had received from the Department of Industrial Relations a civil wage and penalty assessment that they were out of compliance on this, the apprenticeship requirements. And Goodland took the position that they were eligible for that exception that I just described and asked for a reassessment of the, of the finding for that. And so the eventual outcome was that Goodland and the state entered into a release agreement. And the key parts of that were, it included the stated Goodland position, which was that they were eligible for the exemption, the state's position that they were not. But the two parties agreed to, rather than litigating the issue, that they agreed to a payment of $5,500, which was a reduction from the $16,500 of the original assessment. And so that, that payment was made and the complaint was closed. So that's pretty much what we found about that particular circumstance. And so what we thought we would do is bring back the original recommendation, which included the two contracts, but also bring two other options for the city council to consider. The first of those would be to reject all bids and to put the project back out to bid, in which case we would recommend taking no action on the field turf contract until we've settled the, the issue with the contractor for the main part of the project. And then the third option would be to essentially direct staff to pursue an award of contract to a bidder other than the low bidder from among those who had bid. And then to, again, to award a field turf contract simultaneous to the contract for the main part of the park project. And so the administrative report provides a little more information about the issues related to each of those options. And so I won't, I won't go through those at this point, but I would just indicate that I and/or the city attorney are happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. Okay. Questions?
I have a question. Maybe for the city attorney. Can you tell us, because there seems to be a conflict here. The state says they broke the law and they say they don't think they did. Which prevails in that?
Well, we haven't reached an independent conclusion about which side is right because we haven't had the opportunity to speak with both sides. They, the two parties entered into agreement where they basically said, we're going to settle it, we're done with it. And, and that's basically where we are. So this really is no opportunity for us to go through and do our own analysis of the law. We're not the enforcement agency of the law. So that's where it stands.
But, but I mean typically, if you're cited, you're investigated, you're found to be in violation, then, I mean, under a law, then that pretty much means, even if you're able to negotiate it down to something else, in my, in my way of thinking, there's some reason why they had to pay $5,500. It wasn't just because, just because.
Yeah, I think, I think the state agency concluded that there was a violation and they must have thought there perhaps there was some issue about, about their interpretation, that they didn't want to take the risk of appealing. But they, they would not have insisted on a payment if they didn't think that there was a violation of the code.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Do we have any public comment?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. David Del Torre with the Laborers' Union, Local 261. I want to thank you for your leadership and for postponing the, the awarding this project, awarding this project to further vetting of any additional violations, who, which by the way, was only brought up because they did challenge the Foundation for Fair Contracting to discover and bring up any other violations. They, they should have been forthcoming, they should have been forthcoming knowing that this was out there, but yet they didn't. Yeah, I want to thank the Foundation for Fair Contracting for bird dogging and bringing this up on behalf of, of the working families. I would just recommend that, I would strongly recommend that you would go with the second lowest bidder. Okay? Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you. If you could repeat that last part strongly.
Just recommend that you go with the second lowest bidder.
Okay. Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Bingham, followed by Arturo Sands.
Counsel, Robert Bingham, President of Goodland. Stand before you guys, being accused of accusations that are simply false. Goodland has a right, per the code, to employ one apprentice when it exceeds four journeyman workers for the project. On the Bernal project, Goodland was not in violation of breaking that code. We simply argued our position that we are applicable for that exemption. And in the process, we got down to a point where we had to make an executive business decision. Do we spend 20, 30, $40,000 to litigate a case that we felt strongly about, or do we spend $5,000 to make the whole thing go away? So that was the position that we decided to take. Had the FFC and the laborers' union had a stronger case, I don't feel that the DIR would have let us off the hook with negotiating a settlement. Throughout this entire process, we've done a ton of project, of public works projects, over 100 projects to date. And there has been a couple of disputes that I will acknowledge that have been presented. However, I feel that we are being targeted simply because we're a non-union company, and that is our constitutional right. We can't be belittled by the unions because we simply don't agree with their bylaws. And Mr. Bonilla, being a union rep, can also acknowledge that, being a field member representative, there is a ton of disputes similar to this from union to union. Carpenters on laborers, laborers on operators. This is just part of doing business. This is nothing more than a shakedown by the unions because they are in this community and they feel that we are against the unions. And all we're trying to do is make a fair living for ourselves and for our workers and for the citizens of San Mateo. If you look at the bid results, there's an $80,000 economic advantage. Please do what's right for your citizens. Let's get this project built. You guys have every right to come out, audit our books. The FFC can come out. Mr. Bonilla is more than welcome to come to the job site, as he has in the past. And we can all work together to bring this project home. Thank you for your time.
And next speaker is Arturo Sands.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak at our first meeting. I know I fumbled the football a little bit, but it was my first time. At the end of that meeting, I was given a task to go out and find more information on Goodland Landscape. We were to present that the City Pleasanton project where they did, were issued a QUAPA. He is right, they did pay for it, but his stance was still a violation of 1775, 1777.5 for apprenticeship. That's our key. I know as a father and as a commissioner of a volunteer softball league, how it is to have a project teed up and ready to go and have something of this nature come up. But you guys are a trustee to our community. I used to live in San Mateo, right there on B Street in a little duplex when I was first married. And all I ask is that we give this contract to a reputable contractor who has no violations. We argue that we go with option three, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I have no other speaker slips.
Okay. So we'll bring it back to the council for comment and go from there.
I have some comments.
Okay. Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you. First, I think it needs to be recognized that San Mateo, as a city that issues public works projects under the state laws, has awarded plenty of contracts to contractors who are not signatory to any unions. You're living proof. So that aside, I want to make sure that this city, when it's performing its public works, it makes sure that the laws are being obeyed, that they're going to be obeyed, and that we uphold the dignity of the prevailing wage law, which is intended to level the playing field so that the workers all get the same wage, the wages that are provided under the wage determinations from the DIR. And, and the apprenticeship standards are an inherent part of that. They do not go away. If you disagree, they're there. And, and I feel very strongly that we need to award to a contractor who has not violated the law, at least not recently, because this was just last year. And the settlement only happened this year. So I'm going to recommend my personal thoughts, and then we can hear other comments, but that we choose option three, which is where we, in the interest, which was conveyed by staff earlier, that there is some timeliness to this project. I think it would be faster to look for another one of the previous bidders, see if they will take it. I know that it's going to cost a little more, but I think it's worth it to get the job going and to do it with a contractor who is known to be a follower of the law in the, in the interest of the people. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Rick, I think it's within our purview to sort of discuss this out a little bit.
Yeah.
The, the idea that, that it's common or rare to have a complaint like this at a, at a work site, are there, are there builders who, who end up not having any complaints made about their work site, that there's nothing wrong with them, or?
Yeah, there are plenty of contractors that have no complaints to the DIR or the DAS. Right. What Mr. Bingham was describing was between contractors, they call jurisdictional disputes about who's going to do the work and what the actual proper wage for the worker who's classified to do that job. It's a whole different level of stuff that goes on between unions. So, no, this is very simple. There are lots of good contractors who have not had any complaints and have not paid any violations.
Do you have any more questions? I got a couple of questions. So one, and Mr. Council, you might be able to step in here, or maybe our city attorney also. So Attachment 7 is how the city can protect itself in the event of a breach like this, if there's a failure to hire apprentices as prescribed by the law. Is that right? And then there's some other stuff we could do with certified payroll submittals as to the apprentice matter being fulfilled as well? And there's downsides to not complying with that?
Yes, Mr. Mason, speak to the memo that was generated by his office. But I think the other two suggestions we had were, was that we could require that the certified payroll submittals be provided to staff as well, and that we would review those against the prevailing wage schedules to ensure compliance as well. And the second thing that we could do would be to require all of the, basically the submittals, there's two submittals that need to go to each of the trades around the apprenticeship issue. And we could require that those be submitted to us as well. In the documentation that you've received from Goodland on several of their correspondences, they've included copies of those forms. There's really notification that a contract has been awarded. That's the DAS 140. And then the DS 142 would be the, would be the request for a dispatch of apprentice. So we could require that those be provided to us as well. But perhaps Mr. Mason could speak to the other issue.
Before you do that, so explain to me, the request for the dispatch, then that goes to the union and they say, can you please dispatch to us apprentices for a particular job, right? Is that what that document?
So I've been an expert on labor law for about 10 minutes here. So I, but I believe it goes, it goes to the apprenticeship committees.
Say it again?
It goes to the, I think those go to the apprenticeship committees, but we have people back here, perhaps on the DA, that know that more exactly. But it, but it's requesting that apprentices be dispatched to the work and identifies, goes to the trade and identifies what the need is.
Okay.
Yes.
Or do you have a follow-up to that? Would you rather wait?
Nope. I'd rather wait.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes. And so Attachment 7 is a memo prepared by Assistant City Attorney Wilson in my office. And it sort of outlines the remedies, both the penalties that go along under state law for violating these, these laws, prevailing wage laws, apprenticeship laws, as well as the contractual remedies the city would have if the contractor did, did not comply with those laws. So there are remedies available when, when violations occur.
Okay. Did you have a?
No, when you're.
I think I'm done for now.
So I just have a question for Councilmember Bonilla, so I could better understand his position on this. Is your, is your main kind of concern that the, that Goodland would not follow these, these regulations for this project here? Or is it more to kind of punish them for alleged violations in the past?
So my concern right now is that going forward, we try and use a contractor who is not known to have violated these laws. And I have another concern, which is that in the letter and the materials that were sent to us from Goodland, I sensed and I read an attempt to try and dissuade us from thinking that a violation was a violation. that a violation was a violation, that there was some problem with the law, which said that signatory contractors to the laborers' union could only be the ones who qualified for that particular exemption, which is the law right now. You have to be signatory to qualify for that exemption, okay? Which they didn't qualify for because they're not, and that's nothing, it's no judgment on my part. That's just what the law says right now. So, he tried to convince us that the violation was not a violation, and then that he only paid just to make it go away, which were his exact words just a minute ago. That's not a great attitude, I think, going forward in terms of showing respect for the law. In fact, it shows a kind of contempt for the law, in my mind. So I just want to get the job going with a contractor who doesn't have any violations under their belt, and we can move forward.
So it's not about whether or not they will be able to fulfill their 100% obligations for the city of San Mateo on this project?
Well, okay, in terms of that, I think Paul just meant, or no, Sean mentioned in his letter here, that, for instance, we could take, Paul said we could collect the certified payroll reports and we could examine them. So I have some questions about that. I don't think we employ anybody who is qualified, trained, knowledgeable in examining certified payroll reports. In fact, they're not simply wage reports, they're wage and hour reports. You have to, actually have to know who was working on the site, what days, and we have to be able to gather superintendent's daily logs so that we're able to discern who was there. I've seen so many different arrangements that people made where they showed repeatedly, people worked on the job site only five hours a day while claiming they worked someplace else for the other three hours a day. And I don't think, unless we hire somebody who that's what they do, there are people out there who that's what they do, they enforce certified payroll, that we don't have anybody in-house that could do that. And so I think that we would be a failure if we tried to do that. That wouldn't really work here. So, yeah, I am concerned that we actually get what we're supposed to get under the prevailing wage laws.
That's my question.
Which is the people's money's worth.
So, okay, I guess I got a follow-up question on that. So it's worth over eighty thousand dollars plus of taxpayers' money to fulfill that, what you're talking about?
To be honest, yes, it's worth it to actually have people who don't break the law. And I don't know, I'm not saying he did, what I know is there was a settlement, and the settlement appears to be based on some violation of the law. Okay? So, yes, I say it's worth that.
I was just going to say that nothing was presented to us, and we didn't uncover anything that showed that Goodland had not complied with prevailing wage requirements of what they paid their workers, that the issues were both related around the apprenticeship requirements.
Mr. Counsel, I just, I'm trying to remember, I think I read this in the staff report, that if we run the risk of paying a hundred thousand dollars more to go to one of the other contractors, we could also end up with new bids that are even higher than that, and we also at risk of field turf not honoring the initial contractual amount they gave us?
So, the field turf contract, off the top of my head, I believe it's, their proposal is good through June 1st. And so they're bound by that until June 1st. But after that, they certainly could choose to honor that or not. In terms of the second low bidder, I believe that their base bid, which was what we identified the low bidder on, is about a hundred thousand dollars over. If we included the two alternates that were included, which were the colorization of basketball court and then adding the drinking fountain, then that second bidder would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the amount by Goodland. The third and fourth contractors are a little bit above on the base, but then their alternates are lower, so their net total would be less than that hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, the additional requirements that you would impose on this, on Goodland, are those currently in the motion as written, or would those be in an amendment that we would have to add?
I do not know. Let me see. If you choose option one, which is what you're suggesting...
I can answer that question, but it's, it would need to be added, right? It's not in there, it's not in the contract now that they would have to submit those forms to us, so we would need to have that.
And if I could ask the city attorney, are you comfortable with the language that we've discussed on what would be, what additional requirements would be imposed on Goodland as proposed by the mayor, if you don't mind me saying that?
It's a paragraph in the staff report, but if you want to, and I think the paragraph that we're referring to, just for clarification, would be, bear with me, I'm sorry, I had it in front of you. Okay, it's, in the staff report, there's a section called "Award Contracts to Goodland and Field Turf," and the last paragraph in that report, under number one, says, "In previously distributed memo, Gabriel Wayland, she noted the city remedies available in the event of a contract breach," that's the chapter seven, "in addition, the city could require the copies of all certified payrolls, payroll submittals, and all apprenticeship DAS 140, DAS 142 forms, consistent with the labor code requirement without exemption, that are submitted directly to the state, also be submitted to the city project manager." Who would that be, by the way?
Well, the field manager, the day-to-day guy, would be Ron Mason on our Parks and Recreation staff.
Okay.
So I believe your motion would be to approve the contract with the addition of that language from the report in terms of submitting those forms. I think that's sufficient direction to us to make that change the agreement.
I have some more questions. Does Mr. Mason have any experience with certified payrolls?
Sheila, I'm gonna let, I'll let her director speak to that because he's been an employee with the city for thirty years, and his job has been construction management, so she'll have a better idea of what his role has been.
Thank you, Sheila Kanzie, Director of Parks and Recreation. As Paul mentioned, Ron's been with us for about thirty years. He was also prior to coming to San Mateo, who also worked as a job site superintendent for Valley Crest Landscape when he was on the private side. To speak specifically to that, I don't know that he has. I know that before the certified payrolls were sent to the state, the city accepted those, and so I suspect that on previous jobs, those came to Ron to review before they were sent directly to the state. But I don't know the timeframe in terms of when that might have happened.
Okay, so let me ask you, do you know what happens after certified payroll reports get to the state?
No, I don't believe I'm aware of it.
Having worked in that field for quite a while and dealt with a lot of this, nothing happens unless somebody who's out there checking and monitoring job sites files a complaint. Otherwise, they just get filed. If somebody files a complaint, then they get examined. So unless we have somebody here, if we collect the CPRs and all the daily reports ourselves, and we have somebody here who knows how to read and interpret those and look for violations, they would do us no good. That's my point, okay? So, we could hire somebody to do that, that would be a different thing, but we have nobody here that knows how to do that. It's not been our function, our project managers don't do that, that's not their job. His job as a superintendent previously was not his job. All he did was actually require them to turn them in, and then he turns them over to somebody else. That's all there is to it. So all I'm saying is, if we really stand by the prevailing wage laws and we want to do business in an honest, open, and upstanding way, then we'll go to somebody who has not been found very recently in violation of the apprenticeship standards. It was apprenticeship standards. They are related because these are wage and hour violations, and they have to do with the other parts, the apprenticeship standards under the law.
If I just might add a comment, we've not done due diligence on the other next three low bidders, so I can't say with any certainty that their next of, the next three bidders are going to turn up clean at all, without any violations. And so that's just an unknown to us, since we haven't done that due diligence with any of the next three bidders.
Yeah, thank you, but that's also a normal part of doing business. You don't know of the bidders, unless we ask them ahead of time, have they had any violations, which I think is something we might want to look at doing.
Other...
Are we good?
Well, I'm, my feeling is this, I just want you to know, you know, where I'm leaning with this. I don't see any wage violations in this particular contractor's history, okay? So, and I think there are protections that we have to ensure that there aren't going to be wage violations on this particular job. He's done a lot of public works jobs, and I don't see that there's been wage issues. The apprenticeship issues, we can add some additional oversight to make sure that happens. When I weigh the potential for that against eighty, ninety, upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and a further delay, I'm uncomfortable with that. I feel we can be protected enough, as much as I don't want to, not that I don't want to, but I want to be sympathetic to those concerns, when I weigh it against the potential, the protections, and the price differential, I'm leaning towards the approval with the additional protections. So that's kind of the process that I went through.
Yeah. I'd like to, I mean, I went through all the documents, I read them all, all the letters, the emails. You know, I think it's really unfortunate this situation came up and that we had to delay this highly utilized field to the extent that we have already, and I think it was appropriate, the city did its due diligence. But I'm not convinced that there's enough strong evidence to deny this contract to Goodland Construction and incur that additional hundred thousand plus dollars. I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to our community, as well as looking to protect their interests, to do the job the best way we can, you know, in a financially feasible way, and I appreciate that the city attorney, Gabriel Wayland, gave us sufficient remedies for a breach of contract. I think we can, with some additional, I think, requiring some additional submittals, police this in a way that will meet our requirements. And I think we've had a relationship with Goodland in the past without any issues coming up. So my hope would be, they're kind of on notice that they're going to be watched on this project, and that, you know, we're not going to have any problems, that we can move forward and get this done. My concern is also with field turf, changing their dollars. We see monies going up all the time for all construction projects, and I think we'd like to just try to get this done in the most efficient and cost-efficient way we can. So I'm leaning towards going with the award to Goodland.
With the protections?
With the protections in place.
I'm in favor of moving... Of moving forward with, going with Goodland, with the protections in place. The hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I mean, I'd rather that be spent on our parks, on our kids. If we're going to be spending more than we have to, let's put it to good use. I think that Goodland knows that they're going to be watched like a hawk on this project if they end up getting it, and I think that's good. And I think it's time that the kids get their park, and we stop, you know, playing politics with this and just start the project already.
You have comments?
Playing politics? I'm sorry. We have to stand up for something, okay? And these are the laws. We are a public works employer. We create projects, and it's always been our value that we make sure we get people here who follow the law. Now, we could, anybody can bid these projects, that is the law. Anybody can. But if you're implying that I'm playing politics, you're going up the wrong tree. That's it, I think you know my position. Thank you.
So what I would look for is a motion, and in making the motion, if whoever makes the motion reads the language after option one up to where it gets to option two, that way we should have a good, clear record as to what the council's decision is.
What was the last part? I'm sorry, option one, and then you said something at the end I didn't quite hear, sorry.
If you look at this, at the agenda, it has option one, the language, adopt the resolution to find that the alternative purchasing procedures, and then the language that follows. If whoever makes the motion reads that language up to the point where it says not to exceed eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Several lines down, that way it will capture all the actions that the council is approving.
And would it have the protections in there?
And then add the particular, from the paragraph from the staff report.
Okay. All right. So I'll make the motion. Adopt a resolution to find that the alternative purchasing procedure of participating in cooperative purchasing program is in the best interest of the city. To purchase and install the synthetic turf at King Park, approve two agreements with A, Goodland Landscape Construction, Inc., in the amount of one million, three thirty-nine, five twenty-one, to construct improvements to include the base bid and alternates, number one, acrylic resurfacing at basketball court, and number three, new drinking fountain at field entry, and B, Field Turf USA, Inc., in the amount of six hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars to install synthetic turf at the athletic field, and authorize the Director of Parks and Recreation to execute the agreements and issue change orders to either of both contracts in an aggregate amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars, with the additional protections as follows, that the remedies available in the event of a contract breach be those set forth in attachment seven, and that the city provide, require that copies of all certified payroll submittals and all apprenticeship DAS 140 and DAS 142 forms, consistent with labor code requirement without exemption, that are submitted directly to the state, also be submitted to the city project manager. That's the motion. Okay, that's it.
Second.
All right. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? That's it, that motion passes four to one. Okay, we will move on to... Bonds, bonds, bonds. Mr. Lee, welcome. Is that mic working?
Yes.
Okay, take us through these bond sales.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Rich Lee, Finance Director. The item before you this evening is related to issuance of bonds for 2019 for the San Mateo Foster City Public Financing Authority. Just by way of background, recent financing milestones for the Clean Water Program, in February of 2016, the public, the San Mateo Foster City Public Financing Authority was formed. In July of 2016, the city council adopted a reimbursement resolution. That was to capture expenses that were incurred prior to bond financing. April of 2019, the item before you is specifically for approval of the bond sale. Actually, in about twelve hours from now, the city staff, our consultants, staff from Estero Municipal Improvement District will be getting a bond rating in San Francisco, presenting to Moody's and to Standard and Poor's. May of 2019, we'll be actually first going to the Public Financing Authority Board for approval of the sale, then we'll be going through pricing and closing. So those are the major milestones for the financing. We're looking, as the council is well aware, a one billion dollar price tag. Of that, the cost allocation is, as the chart shows, eight hundred and thirty-three million dollars, that is the city's share of the cost allocation, or roughly eighty-four percent, and the remainder with Emid. The table before you shows the sources and uses of particular interest. The bond proceeds for the entire program, we're estimating at about five hundred and three million dollars. The majority of the remainder comes from the WIFIA program, which was discussed in greater detail in an earlier agenda item, and finally, cash. So that's the city's cash that's generated through these service charges. In terms of uses, as you can see, the lion's share is for the Clean Water Program, eight hundred and seven million dollars, and a portion is to repay the line of credit that the city has with State Street. One important item to note for federal securities laws, in attachment two of the administrative report... report, is the preliminary official statement. It really reflects a Herculean effort on behalf of staff and our consultants to reflect information about the city. Of particular interest, there's attachment A, with appendix A, I should say, and appendix C. Appendix C is the continuing disclosure, or our obligation to provide information well after the debt has already been issued. The bottom line is that we ask that the council review the preliminary official statement. There's information about the city that would be key to a reasonable investor to whether, and their determination whether or not they want to buy or sell the bonds. So the recommendation before you this evening, there's a number of items. First, that the council assents to the San Mateo Foster City Public Financing Authority's sale of the revenue bonds. Second, the financing agreement for a loan from the authority to the city. So the city only pays its share of the actual debt. The continuing disclosure certificate that obligates the city to make annual disclosures to investors, that's appendix C of the preliminary official statement. The bond purchase agreement, providing for the purchase of the 2019 bonds. We ask that you approve and authorize distribution of the official statements. Approve all documents in substantially the form presented, and approve all related documents and actions. This concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
I've got a, so it is that the Financing Authority, and that's made up of the district and the city, right?
That's correct.
Okay. They are going to get the bonds, right?
Correct.
And then the Financing Authority actually loans the money to the city to do the work, and then we pay the Financing Authority back, and they pay the bond market back, right?
That's correct. That's essentially what item number two is. It's the financing agreement between the city and the Financing Authority.
That's how we get the money?
Correct.
Okay. It just was a little attenuated for me. Okay. And I'm just trying to see. And then one more question about the obligation to make annual disclosures, and there, is that on a set date every year that we must do that? And how does that work?
Yes. There's two items that are principally included in the continuing disclosure. First is the city's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or our CAVER. We typically issue that in November or perhaps December. In order to maintain compliance with our bonds, we upload that information. Actually, we have a consultant who uploads that document to Emma. That's the federal, I forget what the acronym stands for, but that's one of, that's the first part of continuing disclosure. The second has--
And no, and just wanted to ask you a question. Is it not the mayor and the vice mayor, or the deputy mayor that sign off on that before it happens, or no?
On the financial statement?
The one that you do every year? Or is that the audit that I'm thinking of?
So the financial statement is presented to the council for approval each fiscal year. In order to be considered for the Government Finance Officer's Award, we submit that by no later than December 31st of each year. But for compliance purposes with bond requirements, it's, there's a deadline of March 31st of each year.
Okay. All right. You were going to say something else. Sorry, I interrupted you. There was a second part to it. No?
Yes. The second part is really to report on debt coverage requirements. Our existing debt, there's a 1.2 ratio between our net revenues and our existing debt service. As long as there is a 1.2 ratio, then we're in compliance, and that will remain true for the debt that we're asking council to approve this evening.
Got it. Okay. Questions, questions? Public comment? They're not lined up? Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
We're going to sign our lives away momentarily here.
In making the motion, if you could read the language under the heading.
Okay. Let me apply my glasses.
Thank you.
Adopt a resolution to approve, one, the San Mateo Foster City Public Financing Authority's sale of revenue bonds, 2019 bonds, financing agreement for a loan from the authority to the city, continuing disclosure certificate that obligates the city to make annual disclosures to investors, and bond purchase agreement providing for the purchase of the 2019 bonds, two, approve and authorize distribution of the official statement, three, approve all documents in substantially the form presented, and four, approve all related documents and actions.
Second, Pat?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained. Passes. Five zero.
Okay. Next up. Is there a license plate reader in the crowd? Come on down. Captain Dave Norris?
We want six.
Six.
Only one glass of the share.
Have they gone down in price, by the way?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I don't, please, go ahead. We'll get there.
We'll get into that level of detail. Captain Dave Norris for San Mateo Police Department. Chief Manheimer is here with me to back me up if there are any additional questions. Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel, and staff, thank you for listening to us today. The item that you have on today is to adopt a resolution to use alternative purchasing method to approve an agreement with Neology Incorporated for the procurement of six automated license plate readers for the San Mateo Police Department in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-four and thirty cents, and appropriate seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents from the available balance of the Measure S Fund, and authorize the chief of police to execute the agreement. I've made a promise that I will try and keep this to about five minutes. Hopefully, there are no stopwatches on me, but I'm ready to--
We can arrange for one.
So first and foremost, we need to set the stage a little bit with you, and this is not new information to any of you here. There is a property crime, especially opportunistic property crime epidemic in the state of California related to some legislation that we had back in 2011, and there is a consistent rise that's occurred since that time, despite our best efforts and numerous strategies that we're employing to keep a tamp down on that. It continues to rise. Most of the suspects that we see that are involved in this type of crime are out-of-town crews that are coming from the bigger cities, that are coming across the bridge or through different freeway avenues and working their way up the peninsula, and hitting pretty much every city in between. There's two graphs that are here on this first slide. One of the graphs just shows this property crime rise, and the other one shows a breakdown with some specifics. And of particular attention to you are the auto burglaries, which we know are very, very high right now, is that top line in the lighter red, and then the one in the middle, that's the brighter red, that's the stolen vehicles, which also continue to rise. And I wanted to highlight those because ALPRs, Automated License Plate Readers, are particularly effective with stolen vehicles. So you all have a city council priority, safe and secure neighborhoods. A big part of that is to leverage technology resources to try and maximize our effectiveness out there, and in particular, to strike at these property crimes. So automated license plate readers are an effective and proven resource, part of our intelligence-led policing strategies. They're really just a faster version of what officers have been doing for decades. And I put an example in there. Some of you may recognize that. Five twenty-three sixty-eight is, May 23rd, 1968, it's the day that Gordon Joinville was killed in the line of duty. And underneath Gordon Joinville, in his notebook, was a description, dark green Volkswagen Karmann Ghia, license plate KKR 030. This license plate reader technology finds exactly that level of detail, and no more. Doesn't pull in registration information. All it does is take that basic descriptive information and compare it to other data. So we are, we're in an era right now where neighboring agencies, neighboring cities are hardening their jurisdictions with ALPRs, closed-circuit television. We need to be competitive with that, otherwise we may be more vulnerable than some of those jurisdictions. So there's a lot of detail on this page. I'm going to try and hit the highlights for you. We currently have two ALPR vehicles that have been in operation since 2011. So they've been in operation for eight years, which is a really long time in terms of technology equipment, and operating on that same equipment. So data from those ALPRs is uploaded to the Northern California Regional Intelligence Center, otherwise known as NICRIC, and that is the database from which we warehouse, store, and retain all of that data under strict federal guidelines. There, both the physical security of that facility and the access through which we get those is highly controlled. Only authorized and trained personnel articulating a legitimate law enforcement purpose and adding a case number can access that system, so that it's very audible, auditable, and very secure. We have a record-sharing agreement with our other fellow cities here in the county, with allied San Mateo County law enforcement agencies, in other words, the county chiefs, and our officers use this database daily to investigate crimes. We meet all the legal compliance for our ALPRs, and we have policy and procedures in place to make sure that we're handling that data in the most professional manner possible. What the approval of the purchase gets for us today, we'll be updating the equipment on our two current ALPR vehicles. We'll be adding two additional ALPR vehicles to that number, and then we will also be outfitting two mobile message trailers. And what's really important about the mobile message trailers to us is it gives us a flexible option. We can place those on hotspots. We can place them strategically for event management situations, and it gives us what we consider to be a good proof of concept for what will be, I would guess, a request in the future for fixed ALPRs like other cities are doing. And we'll be able to put these in specific locations, gather the data, and give you some type of a proof of concept of how that fixed ALPR system will work. So this is just to give you a quick example. So I took five minutes out of my day the other day, went through about the last sixty days worth of emails searching under ALPR, and I came up with five really good examples of how automated license plate readers help us in our crime-fighting efforts. There was a suspect that was identified in a road rage incident in San Bruno. Our arrest, which most of you already know about, in the month of February for an arson murder case, relied heavily on ALPR to accurately identify the suspect in that case. Commercial burglary crew in Fresno that gets immediately connected to Northern California and Southern California for additional cases. A murder case out of Danville, and an East Bay case that was a violent home invasion. All of those cases were flyers, and I extracted a lot of the information out of it because a lot of them are active investigations, but flyers that come through from other agencies saying that they have identified suspect based on ALPR data with photos of the actual suspect vehicle that help us to investigate those cases. So I've got a couple pages on why this technology is essential, and I'll try and go quickly through that as well. This is, the ALPRs are being used actively in major cases right now, all the time, by all levels of our department. Our police officers on the street, our detectives, our crime reduction unit, who's kind of our high-profile street crime unit, they're all using this technology every single day. And they're using technology that's coming in from all these other Bay Area resources, and they all say that they could shorten their investigation time, shorten their operational periods, getting to the crux of suspect identification if they had more data that was coming in from local ALPR sources. We also have a tremendous amount of community support, community meetings, coffee with the cop meetings, and in social media, a lot of folks in our neighborhoods are saying that they're, that they have very high approval of the ALPR systems and what they do for law enforcement. We have not heard really any negative commentary on that. And we have multiple police agencies throughout the Bay Area, really throughout the state and nationwide, that are saying that they believe that ALPR presence in their communities is a deterrent to crime. That was pretty quick.
Wow.
I know I rambled through all that stuff really, really fast, so if you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer, and if I can't answer, I'm sure--
It was seven minutes, but--
How soon can these things be delivered?
Yeah. You asked for me to keep time. I thought, give me your money's worth.
How soon can these things be delivered?
Good question.
We are, we are going to put the plan in place tomorrow, if you approve tonight.
We're ready.
I have a meeting at eight-thirty, nine o'clock tomorrow morning to put everything in motion, if approved.
What are the tough questions you get from the community about privacy concerns?
We have not had a lot of questions about privacy. I know that in discussing with some of the Measure S committee, they just wanted to know what we're doing in terms of privacy. So part of the, part of the requirements are that we post things on our website that show exactly how we maintain the security of the data, and what we, what we are required to do in order to access the data. And then part of, part of it is also just ensuring folks that we're not pulling registration information. If I, if our ALPR gets Councilman Goetzel's license plate and a photograph of the rear of the vehicle, so that we have a vehicle color, make, model, and description, and the license plate number, that is all we get. The only time that you get more than that is if that data, when it is automatically compared to lists of wanted vehicles, what we call hot lists, you might get, you might get a hot list hit that would be just matching that data, but it doesn't pull the personal identifying data of anybody. And generally, that is a pretty big, I won't call it a selling point, but a pretty, a pretty big argument point with folks that are really concerned about privacy. And essentially, what we're doing with our, with our activity is, we're just enhancing what we have been doing for decades as police officers. And that's why I put that example in from the day that tragically Sergeant Joinville was killed, is that's, that's the kind of data that we have been extracting with our eyes, with our observations forever as police officers. We're extracting no more than that with these automated systems. We're just doing it faster and in higher volume.
Can you go back a few slides to the one with the laptop in the vehicle? In this setup, it looks incredibly distracting. Is that the setup that would happen inside of vehicles? And are we taking any steps to make sure that drivers of our vehicles are not distracted in a way that could cause a crash?
I'll give you, I'll give you a few points to answer for that. The first is that this is not the setup that you would see in our vehicles, per se. This would be something that might show up for an investigator doing an investigation, but it wouldn't be a live action, something that an officer would have. The second thing that I would say to that is, generally, there are, there's audible hits, so the officer doesn't have to watch the screen the whole time. They'll get an audible beep or something that will indicate to them that there's something going on that they need to check out. And in addition to that, our feeling is that when you, when you provide this type of technology that enhances officers' ability to collect information without having to actually look at it, our drivers are actually performing safer because they're not looking at all the license plates of all the cars on the road. They're looking ahead of them at the traffic situation that they're driving into. So in my opinion, at least, it's a safety reducer, or a safety enhancer, reducing, reducing the risk of being distracted while they're driving.
Sounds good. I mean, I hope that's, I hope it plays out that way.
So can you help explain why, why, I think you're requesting six of these, or was that the, is that the number?
We, we went through several different rounds of looking at different numbers. We were looking for something that fit, that was a reasonable ask with regard to Measure S funds and what we immediately needed. We knew we needed to turn over those two old ALPR systems. We knew that we needed additional ALPR systems, and that we wanted to get something that was a proof of concept on our mobile message trailers, so that we could put some semi-fixed ALPR locations out in public. We'd love to have more.
But is this the type of thing where six is good and twelve is twice as good?
Absolutely.
Okay. What, what is your, kind of your timeline for, I guess, evaluating the proof of concept and, I guess, what is the roadmap if it goes the way you're thinking or hoping it goes?
It depends a little bit on our operational needs, but we would be looking to put things in motion that would help us with that proof of concept as quickly as possible, because we'll want to be able to come back to you and show to you exactly what that does.
I think if you're asking, what's the long game here? This, these mobile trailers that we can put in fixed hotspots are going to help us--
Identify exactly how helpful it would be to fix some posted hotspots as other cities are doing. San Carlos just approved it. These series, these cities that are crossroads for the freeways, which are easy on and off, as you know, we're the major crossroads in the county. And so we are hoping to bring back to you next year-- And so we are hoping to bring back to you next year, after this proof of concept, a fixed system that would help, and neighborhoods are begging for it. In fact, neighborhoods, private neighborhoods are putting them in themselves.
And that answered my last question, was that would we be saving more money down the road if we just, you know, you probably have a 95% chance where one or two of these fixed ones will probably be really good before you need to have. I was just wondering, does it make sense to keep buying six temporary ones when, if you know, like some sort, is the economics work where it works better?
Can I just say, I think these are very important because we need the mobile ones to actually do the audits of the transient hotels, et cetera. And so these are really collectors. The two that are the trailers are the ones that are really going to help us decide where's the best place to put them. If we could get three or four more, we're going to play with these over a period of time and then let you know where's the, this is the best return on investment to get them. We're happy to add another four now, but I really think this is a prudent way with some Measure S funding to get this and really get it going. And we have been waiting quite a while. We have our business services manager back there who has the contracts ready for you to sign tonight.
We would love to get back to you with some of the jurisdictions that have fixed ALPRs already and the success that they're showing, and give you an idea of what it looks like in a similar-sized area, having these ALPRs out there in fixed locations and what that can do.
This, to me, sounds like an outstanding investment for funds in terms of our public safety.
Yeah, I think I wondered if they are coming down in price. I applaud your thinking about buying in bulk, but it may be that time might be beneficial as well. I don't know. That's why I asked you. They come down in price, about $18,000 apiece?
Yeah, for the, for all the mobile stuff, anything that we'll put on a trailer or a vehicle, it's about $17,500 apiece to outfit them completely. Intersections and fixed ALPRs have come in a little bit different price range, and it really depends on the complexity of those areas that we put them in.
Okay. I'm sorry, I went ahead.
Oh, that's okay. No, I just wanted to clarify, when you were talking about that it would cut down on investigation and operational time, I'm assuming that then equates to having more officers out on the streets, which I think is something our citizens really would like to see as well?
Yes. So very briefly, the conversation I had with one of our working detectives who had been involved in a street crime unit before moving into the Detective Bureau, what he's telling me is that the data that we get locally here in San Mateo will help us to identify San Mateo crimes. What they're doing right now is they're having to reach out to other jurisdictions, hoping that those suspects are rolling through those other jurisdictions to pick up that information. So when we are sitting around waiting for that information to come in, or if we have to go out on some type of either, you know, a physical surveillance operation or some type of other sting operation to try and get those people into us, we can be much more efficient with that time and effort if we have local information to work with.
Standing. Okay, thank you. So, do we have a motion?
We have public comment.
Is there public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
The one time I don't ask. Mr. Hedges.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pappin, and council members. As Chair of Measure S, we had to go through some history of what the funds were for. As you know, I ran the campaign on the citizen's side to pass the measure, and we knew that it was, those of us that were involved in it, was for street and road repair, for flood control, and for extending the library hours, and for enhancing the police department. So at looking at that, we took all of these things into consideration. We came up with most of the money for streets and roads, $100,000 for flood control because FEMA's come back and affecting 28% of our residents by demanding that we raise San Mateo Creek again, and $72,000 for the police department, and $18,000 for the library, which will go toward money from the Library Foundation to improve one of the branches. So we were able to leverage that money for a lot more money. So just a personal note, I'm very in favor of these cameras. We're considering them, if we can afford them, at Harbertown. We've had three trucks stolen that were workers' trucks that live with us. Our own poor guy who is our foreman of our maintenance had his truck stolen with the tools he's collected all of his life to add insult to injury. When they found it, it had been towed in, it had been destroyed, useless, but he had to pay the tow charges and the storage fee. So we raised $6,000 at Harbertown by voluntary gifts to help him restore himself to normal. Didn't do it all, but it was a big help. But we're very much in favor of this. I've not heard anybody talk negatively about it at Harbertown. And they know about it. They're actually pushing us for cameras. So, and if we get those cameras, they'll be linked in with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close public comment. I do want to thank Mr. Hedges for all of his efforts with respect to Measure S, and then after that, and the allocation of those funds, we really appreciate your contributions. And no finer steward than yourself. Okay, do we have a motion or a comment?
I do.
We'll go back for comment or motion, however you want to proceed.
Well, if folks want comments, that's, I mean, I think this is probably the most valuable way we can spend the Measure S money. I do thank the Measure S Committee for overseeing how the funds are going to be allocated, but I think public safety is something this entire council is very concerned about. The track record so far in how this has helped solve crimes, the fact that it's going to help get more of our officers on the street, help with investigations, I think it's a perfect way for us to utilize some of those Measure S funds. So if, unless others have comments, I'll just make a motion.
Please do. Okay, I move that we adopt a resolution to use an alternative purchasing method to approve an agreement with Neology, Inc. for the procurement of six automated license plate readers for the San Mateo Police Department in the amount of $108,124.30. Appropriate $72,718.53 from the available balance of the Measure S Fund and authorize the Chief of Police to execute the agreement.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Thank you.
Five zero. Thank you so much for your effort.
Thank you so much. Okay. Well, that brings us to the end of the agenda. And do we have any? I have just an announcement, anybody, a report, rather, reports and announcements.
Just something brief.
Go right ahead.
No, maybe you were going to talk about the same thing, the ad hoc committee?
Nope.
Oh, okay. So I was just going to give a real quick, quick update. The ad hoc committee for the 101 Managed Lanes met and came to some consensus around the staffing for the JPA that's going to be formed. We have another meeting this week, and then we'll be able to report back on what that final staffing model is going to look like. But it was a very collaborative event between CKEG and TA representatives and the staff, and so I think we're, everyone will be very pleased with how that's going to look.
Definitely. Councilwoman Urbania?
Thank you. So as a member of the Hart Court, I want to announce that we're having our annual Hart fundraiser. It's coming up on May 2nd. It'll be 6:00 PM, no, 5:30 PM, at the Devil's Canyon Brewery in San Carlos. It's a great thing. It raises money that we need, about $140,000 bucks a year we've been getting, keeps our office running, and makes us able to continue doing what we're doing, which is making loans to nonprofit affordable housing developers and first-time home buyers. So it's a great thing. I want to add one last thing that I think I need Iowa Councilmember Rodriguez's apology. I may not have understood what he meant when he spoke, so I apologize for that. In the future, if I have questions about that, I'll ask you later.
I do want to get back to the Hart thing really quickly. I saw that they are raising the amount, for first-time home buyers, the amount of how much they can make, I think, and how much the home is worth.
No, it's how much the home can be worth, because we can only finance up to so much through the financing arrangements that we have.
So that means that the down payment they provide can go up.
So it had been $730,000, I think it's up to $905,000 now. So that means they can look for a more expensive place.
Yeah, wonderful.
Keeping up with the times is really all that is, adjusting for the high cost of housing. Yeah.
That was good news. Anyone else?
I just want to say, great job, Kathy Phelan and Drew.
Just don't talk as much next. Councilmember Golthos?
I got nothing.
I got something. I even have a, what you call it?
T-shirt.
A prop.
Oh, I left my t-shirt at home.
So I just want to give a big shout out to Henscom, which is a homeowners association in northern, excuse me, North Central San Mateo, to a phenomenal event that they had on Saturday to do a neighborhood cleanup. It was multicultural, it was multi-departmental with the city of San Mateo. Public Works was out in rare form with their barbecuing, and I found myself down near the freeway alone, just picking up trash, brought some back, went back out again, got some more trash. They collected a bag that had, are you ready, eight pounds of cigarette butts. I mean, it was unbelievable, unbelievable. And this is a community effort in collaboration with the city, the city manager's office, the Public Works Department, and I know I'm leaving somebody out, but in any event, it was really neat, and I love these t-shirts. So it talks about loving North Central, and I'm telling you, this was nothing but a labor of love, and I'm just super proud of our city and our residents, of course. Okay, that's all I got. You got something else?
I just want to, just for our public to know, that our city manager participated in the Boston Marathon today and crossed the finish line, and we're all very proud of him. So congratulations.
In three hours and 29 minutes, people.
And nine seconds.
And nine seconds. Don't forget the nine seconds. We're really proud. Drew, this is for you.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we will adjourn. Thank you all.